Bill. You guys about ready?
I'm ready.
Fantastic. Ms. Armstrong.
I'd like to call to order the September Elizabethan City Schools Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone is doing well. If you would, please stand and Mr. Alexander will lead us in the Pless flag in a moment of silence.
As we pause for a moment of silence, I ask you to thank the Pless family, Mrs. Carolyn Pless, that's Eddie's aunt, who recently had a serious stroke. Thank you. Ms. Pless is a retired teacher from our system.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge, pledge, to the Father, on earth, in heaven, in the highest, in the great heavens, in the highest heavens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the best of all.
Thank you. It's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, it's time to approve the consent and regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Alexander.
Prior to the personnel update, I would like to say three things. First of all, I hope that most people in this room were able to see Lieutenant Colonel Bruce Crandall Medal of Honor winner who made a presentation last Friday at Elizabethan High School, one of the most moving ceremonies, and there is a DVD there of that that Mr. Trent and his guys, Mr. Day and others, have tried to put together, which has done a great job with that. But anyway, to have seen Mr. Wright and Mr. Campbell's classes, the band and the choir, if you get an opportunity to see the 2530s over here that, Ms. Trent, I'm sorry, I put a thumbtack into the wall over there because we hadn't gotten the frames that Mr. Van Hes was kind of at the order, they haven't come yet. But if you get a chance to look at those, we'll give copies of those to the high school. And it was just an amazing morning, and rarely ever, that was only in seven schools in the state of Tennessee that were able to have a presentation by the Medal of Honor winners' recipients, and it was just something. Anyway, I've been affiliated to the school system 39 years and 30 years there, and I never saw anything like that. But anyway, just to be in the company of somebody like that is moving. I appreciate the board allowing me go to the student and study council for the eighth time. It is apparent maybe that statewide politics may change the nature of that in January. We haven't been receiving an enormous amount of assistance and direction from many of the State Department people. But as it is now, a lot of that effort for testing falls on our interventionist coaches who are doing an excellent job. That's Ms. Marsha Taylor and Ms. Anna Hurley. But anyway, they're the connection with the classroom that is necessary and the connection with the principals, and I appreciate so much what they do. Anyway, y'all are reminded that the TSBA Fall District Meeting is Monday, and the dinner and the meeting and the dinner start at 5:00. We will rendezvous here at 3:45 for anybody who won't survive, and if you can take my drive, then you're welcome to be in there. Anyway, moving right on with the personnel update. Nicole Horn, TA Duggar Assistant Softball Coach, effective 822. Lindsey Norris, TA Duggar Assistant Volleyball Coach, effective 825. Michael Hooks, TA Duggar Assistant Baseball Coach, effective 825. Kayla Story, Eastside Teacher, effective 825. Jane Malone, ESP Substitute Childcare Worker, effective 93. Vicki Manuel, Herrick McCormick Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 95. J.C. Hobson, ESP Childcare Worker, effective 911. Jordan Miller, ESP Substitute Childcare Worker, effective 911. Christina Faith Stewart, ESP Substitute Care Worker, effective 915. Now, also on the separate page, new hires, Natalie Waddle, LPN PRN, effective 922. Resignations, Justin Conway, EHS Swim Coach, effective 817. Erin Wood, EHS Head Cross Country Coach, effective 823. Mariah Petrowski, TA Duggar Assistant Girls Basketball Coach, effective 827. Elizabeth White, Herrick McCormick Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 915. Now for transfers, Angelina Hathaway, from Eastside Interim Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher to Eastside Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher, effective 825. Charlie Eckhart, from TA Duggar Part-Time Assistant to the Teacher to Interim Teacher at Eastside Elementary, 922 to 123115. Now, leave of absence, Vicki Campbell, EHS Assistant to the Teacher, 822 to 95. Deborah Gooch, EHS Teacher, from 822 to 95. Also, we have Elizabeth Pettit, Systemwide Music Instructor, from 121 to 3615. Now, substitute teacher, Barbara Rangel, effective 82214. And Colby Atwell, effective 910. Also, you have a substitute cook on the next page, Teresa Laws, effective 915. Thank you.
I apologize. I forgot to ask if we had any comments or questions on the consent and regular agenda and even to vote for it. I got so excited to hear what you had to say, Ms. Alexander. So, going back to the consent and regular agenda, do we need to move or change any questions or comments on that, on our consent and regular agenda? I apologize.
The only thing, only question I had about that was, since not any of my regular agenda's items are on this month, I would assume that you will do something this October, and I've kind of thrown it out in the air, but I haven't made any definite plans on it. Actually, what I was thinking about was this room for Ms. Baker, that she has been so dedicated to people, everybody. And then when I checked it over, I kept thinking about it, it kind of led to another thing, which is the fire door there that comes from the room into the hallway. I assume it's a fire door because it's so heavy. I know I went through it, I think, twice this past week. If you let it close, you get locked in. Now, I got to worrying about those children that are in there and those young people too. You know, I wouldn't want mine in there with the chance of the door closing, and then here it is, in the room.
There's also both doors, there are two doors in that. It's approved by the Fire Marshal, so they have a back door and a side door that has nothing to do with that door in between.
I do know, but this still is a possibility. Is the Fire Marshal coming back up here? Have you all requested he come back or anything?
He approved it from the outset, when the work was done and when it was finished, so I don't have any. Mr. Trent, do you know anything about that?
I guess you want them to leave the building. I mean, we wouldn't, if there's a fire, we don't want them back in here. We want them to leave.
They will.
But so, the fire door, you know, between the two parts of the building, I think, is probably something you want. You want, if there's a fire, for them to...
I just don't like the idea of them not being able to open that door and come out of there.
Well, as long as, I mean, they've got two exits, and that's the exit, the most important. I don't want any kids, if there's a fire, I don't want them back here. I want them out.
Right.
So, there's two exits.
Right.
So, I'm sorry.
Right. So, there is, and I thought about this a lot this evening, when I was getting ready to come. You know, certain, I guess it depend on how that fire was, where it was, I don't, I still don't feel comfortable with a door that a child cannot open and go through. So, I can see the Fire Marshal and myself, and ask them about that. It better be good, Mr. Trent.
Well, it is. We've had Jack Buckles, and we, Jack Buckles, our local Fire Marshal, he came up here and helped us come up with a design for that room that would be the safest that we could do. So, we put in a second door in that area, so they can either enter directly on the loading dock, which was the original door, or before you try to come back through the door that you're discussing, there's a door right there that exits straight outside, which, in the case of a fire, would be absolutely the safest exit possible.
Could go out a window, maybe.
I'd rather them go out a door.
I think I'd rather go out a door.
I just didn't...
So, but, and that was, Jack Buckles was very happy with that.
Yeah, I know him.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll think about that a little bit further. I'm not real comfortable with that, but then that's just me.
Okay.
You know, I don't like the idea of losing a child.
Ms. Armstrong. Ms. Armstrong.
Oh.
I've got a question. I want clarification. I have to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, because when you and I had discussion about naming something in honor of Ms. Baker, you did not indicate to me that you wanted to rename this boardroom in her honor. So, you want to take Mr. Pierce's name off and put hers on? Is that what you're asking me to do?
No. To name the boardroom?
Yes, ma'am. You just said you wanted this named in honor of her, so in order to do that, we would have to take Mr. Pierce's name off the boardroom.
Well, I was thinking, actually had in mind, that room back there where she tutored and helped people with...
Well, that's what you had talked to me about earlier, but that isn't what you just said, so that's why I was confused.
I think you said this room, and I think that's what she...
Oh, oh, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah. In my mind, I was picturing that room, and you're picturing this, so that's okay.
Okay, so you are talking about the area where they did tutoring.
Yeah, she calls them my quarters.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
Yeah. That's the back room. But then, I got to thinking, how hard she has worked and asked for that cover at Harold McCormick, the walkway from the building to the gymnasium, whether it's raining or snowing or something. And I thought, no, that is designated on the five-year plan to be built in 2015-16, and maybe we could do something about that, because she has worked and worried, she is really worried about that. And so, I'll think about that a little more. If that could go on October's, then...
Yeah, we'll talk afterwards how we want to work it, how we want to work it.
And then, I assume Mr. Van Hes is going to talk?
Yes.
There he is.
Yes.
About parking, that one cover there. And we don't have any projects, I asked for leasing of those, any other projects that are going to be done, like sealed houses or anything like that.
There's nothing to tell you. We can't wait. If there is, we will be thrilled when that comes up, but no.
And that would have to go through the board.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anything else?
I'll think about that.
Okay. All right. So, item on the floor is to approve the consent and regular agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Before we get started, do you want to say something? I attended the Medal of Honor ceremony at the high school, and I want to commend Elizabethan High School students. You talk about kids who behaved exemplary. From the moment I got on campus, and we had to wait a few minutes, the students were so respectful. There was no messing around, nobody was, I mean, they just stood quietly, and when he arrived, they were just, they just behaved themselves in a way that you just were so proud of that that was your students. And when he spoke, they listened. I think they recognized that they were getting to be a part of something special, so, you know, I'm going to commend Mr. Wright and the high school staff. They did a great job, and Mr. Campbell. So, I just want to throw that out there before we got started. All right. Here we go. First item on the agenda is to approve first reading of Board Policy 1.704, Charter Schools as Proposed. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Now, to begin with, this is very unlikely to be a recommendation ever to the board that a charter school be within the confines of the city. However, it's in reference to newly created public charter schools, and so, the intent of that is to improve learning for the students, provide options, talk about innovation, and also get parents more involved. But anyway, there's several, it sort of contradicts itself in there. Also, in line 25, there's a typo or an error there. Anyway, it goes on to say that any school taken in that you approve as a board will have to be SACS accredited, and we're no longer SACS accredited, so that would be a problem. Anyway, so, there also is, there has to be a local interim interview, which would be handed out to the old SACS review study, which I don't think our administration would recommend or the teachers would want to do. So, under those circumstances, this is the law, and your passing it doesn't mean that we're recommended or not recommended anything. What it means is that we're following up with what the law requires. That was sort of ambiguous, but under the circumstances, we need to adopt this. We'll clean it up, and Mr. Van Hes can put it in a form that corrects the error there.
Am I having questions? Okay. Item on the floor is to approve first reading of Board Policy 1.704, Charter Schools as Proposed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, approve first reading of Board Policy 1.803, Tobacco-Free Schools as Proposed. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Armstrong had a question as it relates to the citation to juvenile court for students who are in violation of this guideline, this policy, and state law. But the only changes on this were for electronic cigarettes and associated paraphernalia. So, under the circumstance, if you don't mind, Ms. Armstrong, do you want to comment on that, as it relates to the citations?
I'm looking to bring you. What'd you want to add?
The, you were concerned about the tobacco-free schools as it relates to the citation being issued, which has been law for the last 10 to 12 years. So, the question is, do you want to make a change in this policy?
Well, you know what? I found it out myself, and I did not get in touch with, well, we're not supposed to get in touch with his rest. Well, he's in Nashville right now, and I am so glad he is. We don't have that text, but do we? My world. I see some my worlds on here that have been discarded.
Well, let's stick with this first, and then we can do that one later. Well, we just want to know, we were talking about the tobacco-free schools.
I did sign, and the word, and I don't have the thing in front of me, the policy in front of me, but the word "using" made a big difference in how that could come out. What number is that? Twenty...
Attachment 27 is what we're on.
Twenty-seven.
Attachment 27.
Twenty-seven. Yeah, I highlighted that. Oh, uses of the tobacco. Of course, that's been very, very picky on that, and you would have a hard time probably. That would be a difference than a child having it in his pocket and actually using.
Well, ma'am, possession is the same, same. If you're in possession of, as if you were in possession of a narcotic or something of this nature, is still punishment.
I don't know. You might have a hard time with that.
Well, ma'am, I did it for 13 years, and no one said anything about it.
I am, I'm going with that, since I haven't gotten in touch with Mr. Crowe yet, but I don't know when I'll be talking with him.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Ms. Armstrong, anything else on this? Okay. So, item on the floor is to approve first reading of Board Policy 1.803, Tobacco-Free Schools as Proposed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve first reading of Board Policy 3.208, Asbestos Management as Proposed. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Our people comply with this by signing the letter we have for years, and we have encapsulated asbestos, and Mr. Trent also, it's also signed off by Mr. McCurry on a yearly basis, and we're in compliance with the management.
Any have questions or comments? Item on this floor is to approve first reading of Board Policy 3.208, Asbestos Management as Proposed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to approve first reading of Board Policy 5.112, Extended Contracts as Proposed. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Before Mr. Van Hes gives up and explains this further, we were wondering when the career ladder would eventually, aspects of it have been trailing off, and monies have for years, but it appears now that there is no longer what we call show-up money, when a person who has a career level one, two, or three, actually two or three, does not get a extended contract, and they want to, there is money available for them. But at this point now, it doesn't have to be offered to them. Ms. Van Hes, do you want to address that further?
If you look at the original policy that we have, that we currently have in place, it references state law that basically they have rescinded. So, that's the nature of this change that we're proposing, the fact that that state law has been rescinded. And as Mr. Alexander said, really, the only thing it does is, it doesn't, it certainly doesn't exclude career ladder individuals. They still have the opportunity, but principals no longer have to offer extended contracts to career ladder two and three people first. They can, they're not tied to that anymore. So, certainly, we're not, you know, advocating that they don't have that opportunity, but it's just no longer part of the law.
You don't have any problems getting people to accept this decision?
Um, no, ma'am. As a matter of fact, we've collected all that information, basically have all the contracts in place and ready to go. So, but as Mr. Alexander said, those funds have dwindled over the years. It's nowhere near what it used to be, which is sad, but, you know, we're using, each school has a committee that basically, they look at the needs, and that's how they determine how to use those. But this doesn't affect career ladder two and three, the monies that they receive for that designation. They still receive, you know, I can't remember the amounts, a thousand dollars a year, depending on the level or whatever. That's independent of this, that's still in place.
Anybody else have any questions, comments? Item on the floor is to approve first reading of Board Policy 5.112, Extended Contracts as Proposed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approve awarding bid number ECSSFY 2014-2015-04 for the purchase of auditorium window curtains for TA Duggar Junior High School, the Kendall Stage Curtains, in the amount of $14,500. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
We've been long waiting for the curtains to match the stage curtains, and so, and at this point, the lowest compliant bidder, that is about $4,000 difference, will be doing that, and we're hopeful, as we mentioned before, that the board will be able to have one meeting there to see how attractive those are. But anyway, I recommend you please do this, and it will make the TA Duggar and the children there, especially in the public, very happy.
Are these the same folks that did the stage curtains?
I don't know that. Ms. Wilson said yes.
I was a little confused, because I thought we did the wall curtains and we did the stage curtains, but this is the same company that did those?
Ms. Wilson says yes. That would make sense.
I know that when you walk in there and you see, you know, when I walked in for the first time and saw the stage, I just stopped. I mean, I couldn't believe how pretty they looked, so this is going to be a wonderful addition. Everybody, you know, in our system uses TA Duggar. Everybody, you know, in our system uses TA Dugger, so it's going to be great. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. Item on this floor is approve awarding bid number ECSSFY2014-2015-04 for the purchase of auditorium window curtains for TA Dugger Junior High School to Kendall Stage Curtains in the amount of $14,500. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item, approved contract between Blackburn Children's and Stigall and Elizabethan City Schools Activity Funds beginning July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 in the amount of $13,800. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
As you all know, this auditing firm also works closely with the city of Elizabethan. And Mrs. Wilson and her people have for years worked with them, and it's been an excellent relationship. Mr. Peters and others have always been so professional, and they really pick through everything. So, under the circumstances, they don't find a lot, and that's because our people are so very confident in that role. So, I heartily recommend this and commend them.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Item on this floor, approved contract between Blackburn Children's and Stigall and Elizabethan City Schools Activity Funds beginning July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 in the amount of $13,800. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is approved contract between Blackburn Children's and Stigall and Elizabethan City Schools beginning July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 in the amount of $18,800. Can I get a motion to approve?
Yes, motion to approve.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Now, I hate that Ms. Wilson won't have an opportunity to get up and speak and things of this nature, but do you want to say anything further about this item, this item, Ms. Wilson? But folks are just wonderful. As they pick us apart, they're wonderful.
Anybody having questions or comments? Item on this floor is approved contract between Blackburn Children's and Stigall and Elizabethan City Schools beginning July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015 in the amount of $18,800. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. If you'll go to the additions, we have one, approve the emergency replacement of loop bypass and chill isolation valves for heating and cooling at TA Dugger Junior High School in the amount of $20,994. TCP and contract has been awarded to Train. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Folks, we found out about this yesterday, and that's why Mr. Trent has to come forward and explain the technical nature of what's happening here that could lead to tremendous expense. I was so embarrassed to go back to Ms. Wilson to ask about an emergency PO for that, but folks, if we don't do this, we're in trouble. Go ahead.
Yeah, what we've got at TA Dugger, we've got a two-pipe heating system that we have also at the high school in Earl McCormick. And what that basically means is we can either run in heat or cooling at any given time of the year. Well, this time of the year, we start, we try to, by keeping the temperatures regulated as we can, we try to switch back and forth somewhat. Well, there are three valves that operate, that make the system operate and also work to protect each individual component of it. Right now, what happened a couple of weeks ago, we had one of the valves failed, and it started pumping cold water through the boilers. Well, it's not a huge deal, as long as that don't go on for an extended amount of time. The bad deal, if that happened during the winter mode, it would pump the hot water through the chiller. That's about a $40,000, $50,000 replacement that we've replaced that barrel once before. So, these valves, we've got some safeguards in place, and the valves are very, very old. One of them, they had to take a pipe wrench and break loose. And so, one of the valves in this replacement right here is a safeguard valve we have in place that it picks up if the temperature gets so high that water's heading towards the chiller, it shuts that valve off. Or one of these valves is also bad. So, that's the three. The loop has to come completely offline. They drain the glycol and the water out of it. And we need basically to have school shut down, you know, for a couple of days while they do this. With the two-week fall break coming up, there's not a better time. Otherwise, I really even hate to think about going through winter with them in the state they're in. So, they did tell me that they can get this done, even if they have to work overtime and nights and stuff, so we can do this during fall break.
Seems like we didn't really have an emergency situation like this last year at TA Dugger?
We had, the boilers went out last year. We replaced the boilers last year.
Is this anything related to that, or is...?
No, it's not. We've got so much equipment that's, valves like this, it's out of date and just flat-out wore out. We've got, we've still got pump issues we've got to address. We've got some old stuff in place right now.
In August of '13 is when we worked with Train. They had said that we had a quadrupling of our gas usage
Yep.
since 2007 at TA Dugger, and we approved the boilers that were about $180,000 roughly.
Right.
Those have been replaced
Yes.
and has nothing to do with what we're seeing. This is a totally different
Correct.
two-valve system that one of them's bad. Is that what I understand?
It is, yes.
Okay. Have we thought through how this will affect the Capital Projects plans to complete the work at TA Dugger that we so desperately need and want to do, but the home stands are in the way?
Yeah.
Have we thought through how this is going to figure? Are we going to do it twice, three times?
The answer to that would be no. As long as we stay with the two-pipe system that we have right now, when we put the boilers in last year, we sized those, and basically, I told them what was probably coming down the road. So, we sized those, and we put boilers in that, let's say, you know, we just built an addition that was as big as the campus we have right now, those boilers are able to be stacked down through there, and they're placed in the boiler room, so we can just keep adding to them, adding to them. And this right here is something, I mean, unless we pretty much demoed the whole building, we've got to fix this. One way or another, we have to fix it. So, it's not money wasted now or 10 years down the road.
Okay.
I guess it just seems to be an ongoing trend with TA Dugger with some of the aging infrastructure we have there, and I just, and I guess you can't foresee a lot of these problems and issues that come up. And I guess I'm with Dr. May on this, you know, if we're planning in the future, hopefully the near future, to do something, man, that some of this work that we're doing is going to work into some of the things we're trying to upgrade there.
It is, and I, trust me, I'm not, you know, trying to look at it just a year out. I am trying to look at it, you know, down the road where we're at. And, you know, I know this is maybe getting a little bit off-subject, but it's like the chiller we have right now, it's got some age on it. And Train offers a program, it's called a renewal program, where we pay a small amount, they take these compressors and everything out of it, and they recondition it, and then it goes like on a warranty type deal. So, we're really guarded on it. He told me, and I may be quoting at the wrong price, I think he told me one of those compressors is like $30,000. They're crazy high. So, they're, but you know, that's the type of things, you know, and maybe when we do the TA Dugger addition, we can look at bringing that chiller, you know, and it'll be kind of like putting this new chiller in more or less, so.
I guess it's kind of helpful to know that we are looking to build so that as you're adding things, you can work to, you know, for a larger area and a larger structure and have that in mind.
We are covered on that for sure. Yep.
Mr. Trent, you want to mention the new person that works with HVAC and things of this nature that we've added to the maintenance department?
Yeah, we do. We've got a new, when Tim Crowe left us, he was our electrician, and we hired a guy in with primarily HVAC experience. And so far, it's worked out phenomenal for us. We're really saving money. Looks like next Monday, we lost an entire unit of the kitchen at East Side Elementary, and we're going to be able to do that job for pretty much the cost of the equipment, which is probably going to save us about $8,000 or $9,000. So, that's what we wanted, so.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Item on the floor, approved the emergency replacement of loop bypass and chill isolation valves for heating and cooling at TA Dugger Junior High School in the amount of $20,994. TCP and contract has been awarded to Train. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. I forgot earlier, my brain just is somewhere else. Mr. Van Huisen, I think you have some things to talk with us about, and so we'll end on a good note.
I do. I'll try to be brief. I've left some information in front of each of your seats. The first is a packet. It contains some renderings and a floor plan of the proposed music room and conversion of the old bandroom to classrooms. On the, when you fold it over one page, you can see the layout. And I can tell you that Mr. Weems' office, the people there have worked hand-in-hand with Mr. Elliott and Ms. Gooch. They've brought drawings to them, said, "What do you think about the space?" They've had input. They've visited other bandrooms and other systems, and everyone, when I say everyone, the architects and those two individuals that will be using this space are very excited about the design, the layout, and just how it's going to fit in with their programs. So, that's that information. The other pages, you can kind of see an exterior view, you know, kind of a rendering of what that space will look like. So, you're, you know, certainly look over that. If you have questions, you can give me a call, or, you know, come by and see me, whatever. If you have any questions now, you can ask, but that's that information. The second thing is, as you know, last week, the planning commission, by a 4-3 vote, approved general site plan, our general site plan for the stadium, the new stadium at the high school. And during that meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion about parking and whether or not we had adequate parking, and there was a lot of debate about exactly what adequate parking means. There was also concerns about the new parking lot that was proposed behind the gymnasium, about students exiting that area in the afternoons onto Jason Wittenway. There was some concern about congestion in that area. So, in a lot of all that information, as well as budgetary concerns about this new parking lot, there are so many EPA requirements on what you have to do with runoff water when you build a parking lot. The cost of that parking lot continued to escalate, and that was really hurting the budget, you know, because, as you know, we have a limited amount of funds. So, in light of all of these issues, we are proposing to go back to the planning commission, and basically, our proposal is to move the stadium 250 feet west and then rotating the stadium 90 degrees. So, it would be located on what is now the baseball field on campus. As you know, when we started this process, one of the things we said, we don't want to damage, we don't want to hurt any program that we have. And so, we had avoided taking that space. However, when we knew there were budget issues, we knew there were concerns about parking, we began talking to Coach Wilson. In those discussions, that field by our students, school-affiliated teams, we only used that field four times last year. The rest of the games were played at Riverside Park, the Twins Field. So, in a lot of that, he, of course, spoke with the baseball coaches, and they were fine, you know, losing that space. The, probably who uses that space more than anyone is there's a summer baseball league of 13 to 15-year-olds that use that space. And we've also had discussions with that group, and, you know, we certainly don't want to throw them out in the cold. So, the discussions we've had have been to allow that group to utilize the fields we built at TA Dugger. And we've received a favorable response to that process as well. And as far as a field standpoint, the quality of the field, the one at TA Dugger is 100 times better than the one at the high school. You know, the only negative is the fence is a little bit shorter. But again, we've received a favorable response from that group. They understand where we are and are certainly willing to work with us. Again, we didn't want to throw them out in the cold, so we felt like that, you know, had we not built those fields at TA Dugger, this may not be a possibility, because we would have still had TA Dugger who had nowhere to play. So, in, another bonus here is, we were proposed to take the lighting system down from around the baseball field at the high school, and we would move that to the fields at TA Dugger. So, that's kind of our thought on the stadium location. In addition to this new location, by not, we essentially don't mess with the student parking lot as it is now, very little. There's the far corner, I guess it's the northwest corner, if you've been in that parking lot, there's a curved kind of angles, and there's a little corner that we would probably lose. But when you count the space that's available, that's currently the driving range, we can probably get another 150 cars parked in that space. So, from the initial plan, there was about 460 parking spaces. This will give us over 600 on campus. So, then, you know, that reduces the burden, you know, quite significantly on the adjacent properties. So, that's what we would propose to the planning commission. We had a meeting today with civil engineers, Mr. Weems, the contract manager, you know, again, looking at all this, and things seem to be falling in line, so we were very optimistic today. And, you know, we hope to have, you know, a budget to bring before the board, you know, within the next few weeks, in a groundbreaking, you know, assuming that the board would approve that, that, you know, and a planning commission approval as well. And let me tell you that also, I spoke with Mr. Hartman, and he's received favorable responses from the planning commissioners, and so, we will be back on the agenda for the October meeting to present this, to get preliminary approval from them. And in the meantime, they will continue to update the civil drawings and things like that for the new location. The good thing is, the stadium itself doesn't change much. The design, the layout, again, it just slides over and rotates 90 degrees roughly. Another good thing, there was some concern at the planning commission about what happens when you have a big game, where you have more people there than you have seats. So, one thing we've talked about in the west end zone is basically taking the earth that we have when we build the retention pond for the stadium, we would basically take that earth and make a berm in the west, around the west end zone. So, there would be a grassy sloped area, people could sit, that don't have a seat in the stadium, as well as a level area on top where people could place chairs, similar to what we have now in the west end zone of the current stadium. So, again, every concern that was brought to our attention at the planning commission meeting, this design answers those questions. So, I just want to give you an update on where we felt like the project was moving, and again, we feel like it's in a positive direction.
Did I hear you correctly? Parking 600?
Yes, slightly over 600. We probably have a better count, but it will be over 600.
Right there on the east, where it is right now.
But, with this move, with this move, we would have over 600 spaces on campus. Now, that may include some other, the parking lot in the front of the building, but there'll be over 600 spaces on campus. Whereas, right now, there would be, with the initial design, there would only be about 460 on campus.
But you're still going to have the parking lot, I have to think which direction that is, on the west side?
We will not construct the parking in the back of the building.
Not at all?
Not at all. No, ma'am. It's just cost prohibitive to do that.
Okay. The grassy area, will this stadium sit, will they dig out and...?
The discussions that we heard today was roughly, if you were standing in the, and this is part of the process they're still going through, but if you were standing in the student parking lot, looking west, there will basically be a couple of ramps and some steps that go up, probably about a 36-inch level up from that parking lot, up to the field level where you enter. So, there will be, it'll be slightly elevated from the parking lot, and that gets it kind of more in the contour and shape of that area now. There's a slight incline in that space now.
The water is so bad in that field. That's the reason I was asking.
And this, and this design, it has, the turf field has a subfield drainage system, so all that water will be, will be collected and handled, so that should take care of those issues.
Where does that drain to? Does that drain to Hudson, or does it drain to Elks, or...?
I think that the parking lot, I can't speak exactly for the field. I don't, I'd have to look at the drawing on where the field drains now, but I know the parking lot drains toward Bemberg Road, I think.
Oh, that is Bemberg, yeah?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. And so, they won't be coming out of, behind the school and through a fairly narrow...
No, that we've eliminated that, that concern.
Only the parents on the park.
That, that, we've eliminated that, that concern in that parking space.
Will they still be used in the hospital?
Well, we also received some preliminary news that on this redesign, they may be able to use the area of the driving range as their construction staging area, which would allow us to potentially still use a large portion of the student parking lot during the school year. So, we're not exactly sure how that's gonna play out, but it sounds very positive. We're gonna be able to keep quite a few students parking in that area. We'll know more about that in the, in the coming weeks.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure. Well, and we're still not popping over on Johnson City property, are we?
Oh, absolutely not. No, ma'am.
Is that solid line that looks like a fence around it? It's the last one outside.
Are you talking about that runs parallel to the Tweety Trail?
Elk Avenue, it actually goes, I hear, what is that? Looks like a fence.
Oh, it is. Yeah. That, that is a fence. And that, what you see inside that is basically concrete. So, that's a concrete walkway concourse around the stadium. And then that would be, what that, the line that you're talking about is a fence.
You'll be, you'll have to fence all of that, won't you?
Yes, it will be completely enclosed with fence. Yes, ma'am.
Well, they're just happy.
Absolutely.
Buses gonna stay where they are.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. We may, to be honest with you, we would like to work and see if there's some way we could move those buses inside that fenced-in area behind the woodworking and auto mechanics. We're trying to figure a way to orient those buses to get all of them in there. So, we are definitely still pursuing that option.
Well, at one time, I think they set out on the inferno.
Mm-hmm, they did.
You can put them up on the hospital and bring the children back down to the building.
Absolutely.
But at least they're not crossing Elk Avenue.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was so worried about.
Yes, ma'am. And I know that in my discussions with Mr. Kitchens with the city, trying to get to that, it seemed like 800 spaces was kinda the magic number that the commission was working around. And even before we had this proposed change, he had calculated not using all the parking spaces, but lots basically in front of Ingalls and the spot, the parking lot where PTA and VFO Brady's and those areas, that we could get a count close to 800, which again, is on the south side of Elk Avenue. So, that keeps anyone from crossing Elk Avenue. They could basically use the Tweety Trail to reach the stadium. And there will be a connection from the Tweety Trail to the stadium. There will be an access, similar material, it'll be the chat. That's, they, the city has a specific way they want you to connect to that. And so, we already have that in the plans.
Well, they could park up E a little bit like they do now, just be the other end of E.
Yes, ma'am. And I think it's, it's C Street that's even wider, I think, in that lower section. So, that may lend itself to that as well.
Well, it's like I said, it's Christmas time coming. Those stores are gonna wanna stay open and I can't blame them. So, I hope it works.
And there's, there's two other pieces of information I wanted to draw your attention to. Part of the fundraising efforts for the, some components of the stadium as well as, this would be a perpetual fundraiser. Basically, in the entrance area to the stadium, there will be brick pavers. And there's space for close to 14,000. So, there's plenty of room to do this. And so, the information that you have, we finalized pricing for those brick pavers. People can donate and they can basically put three lines of text on there. And we will include that. So, we're gonna start that. Basically, this is the kickoff. So, you're the first to hear about it. So, we're excited about that. And we really believe this gives the people of this community a chance to be a part of this project. You know, I'm certainly not in a position to write a big check like I would hope I could, but I can certainly purchase a brick. And, you know, that's gonna be, you know, my connection with that, that stadium. So, we're excited about that. A brick is, it's $100. And you get three lines of text on that. And it's a four-by-eight brick paver that will be forever a part of the stadium in the entrance area. So...
If we got them cheaper than that, was it humane?
I think, I think I purchased one of the, for my father, one of the memorial brick in the veterans wall. And I think that I paid $100 for that one.
Yeah, I think so.
Do we have any guidelines on the text?
Yes, there is. It's three lines of text and you can only have 15 characters. That's letters, symbols, spaces per line. So...
Is there somebody who approves the wording?
Yes. Yes. And on the, if you notice, the second sheet I gave you is basically the order form. We may redesign it a little bit. We're not sure there's enough room to write in your, your text. But there's lots of information on there. And it basically states that, you know, we reserve the right to approve all, all text before it goes on. So...
Cause there's always somebody.
I knew you would think of everything, but I just needed to know for sure.
One more question. The, is the, are we still in agreement that in the bond money, 3.5 for the stadium, remaining for the band room, and school board raised the difference?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Are you not gonna break ground the same time for the band room as they're breaking ground for the stadium? I thought all that was gonna be one big thing.
It is one part, project, part of the construction management agreement that, that you all approved. Basically, GRC says in a 10-month period, they will complete both of these projects. So, that, you know, that the actual shovel in the dirt may not coincide exactly. But the bottom line is, once they put a shovel on the ground, 10 months from then, both of these projects will be completed. And, and again, and I know that there's been some concern about, you know, what's going on with the band room. Again, the band room is one of those things, as you can see, there's been lots of work going on with that. And again, the band room is a building. The stadium is a little more intricate because there's so many specialized parts. And that's why that component's taken a little bit better. And they've been focusing on that, trying to get all of that part lined up. Because it's the bigger, from a cost standpoint, it's the bigger of the two projects. But, but I can assure you, this one is well on its way. And there'll be more information. Hopefully, we'll have some pricing information on that for you to approve in the very near future.
Yeah, I'm reading Bobby Robinson's column in the, in the Star.
Star, yes, ma'am. But I can assure you that as an administration, we're as excited about that band room and that classroom addition as we are, as we are the stadium. So, I mean, that's gonna be a great, a well-deserved addition for the band and music department. And again, if you were at the Medal of Honor recipient program, I mean, the band was incredible and the chorus, the choral group was absolutely incredible as well. So, I'd pay them to sing that song for about a 30-minute period, just, just keep singing. I mean, it was great.
And what's TA Dugger doing all this time? Just sitting there?
Oh, they're, they are. But they're certainly excited about the additions we did there last year. They're able, the fact that they're able to have all of their sports activities on campus. So, excited about that.
I promised a planning commissioner, she called me after the meeting and wanted me to promise that I would commend Mr. Van Huss for just representing the school system so well. And that was a, a, you know, when you're trying to work things out, Mr. Van Huss did a great job representing us. And I promised one of the commissioners that I would publicly thank him. He did a great, great job. So, if I was wearing a hat, I would tip it. But I'm not.
It's on top of everything else he was doing related to his job. So, I think in the circumstances, it's certainly a fair assessment for what he did.
Anything else for anybody? Don't forget, Monday night, we're going to the TSBA regional meeting in Unicoi. And those are always a lot of fun. So, next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Thursday, October 16, 2014, 6:30 PM, located here at the MacPirs Boardroom. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a great evening.